All right, we're gonna go ahead and bring the committee of the whole meeting for February 14th to order. Let the record reflect a starting time of 6:01. And with that being said, Clerk Boeck, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzling.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
You have seven members present.
Fantastic. Please note that Councilman Spatafor did ask for an excused absence tonight. That being said, we have a number of meeting minutes. We had a very busy couple of weeks as we worked to kinda maneuver ourselves through the process to appoint a successor to Mr. Brandon Betts, who resigned earlier this year. So we have a number of meeting minutes that need to be acted on. So I'd turn the floor over to Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move the minutes collectively of January 24th, January 31st. First meeting, January 31st, interviews, February 1st, and February 7th.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to public comment on agenda items. I'm not seeing anybody from the public that is with us today. And so we are actually going to move straight into our presentations. And the only agenda item under presentations deals with our outside auditor presentation. We have on hand with us for the second year in a row, Steve Kernavick from Manor Custerian. He's gonna come on down and visit us in the well for a little bit. We also have our finance director, Ms. Desiree Kirkland, as well as our budget director, who is Mr. Jake Brower. I see there's an additional chair. Eric, can you help pull this chair up? And Mark, could we potentially get you to reposition up here? Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Maybe the mayor's spot?
Yeah, yep, yep. Thank you.
I got your tea up here. You hear me?
All right. So thank you so much. Just to kinda preface, in terms of your actual packet, you do have the CAFER for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. You also have the independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and our compliance. We also have our annual, sorry, internal auditor's analysis of the CAFER. And then you just received an audit presentation that Mr. Kernavick will go through momentarily. This is our second year working with Manor Custerian. To provide a little bit of context, because we certainly would be talking about comments. Comments are essentially findings of weakness. And last year, I believe, we had eight. And at that time, there was a question, I believe it was actually from Councilwoman Vice President Wood, sorry, regarding expectations and what we should see if we're doing everything that we possibly can through our process to take care of those. And it was discussed that with eight, the expectation would be to see growth, I think, across all comment areas. But to, you know, work to try to eliminate one to two per year. I think at that time, Mr. Kernavick, you actually referenced a city you had worked with that had some 36 comments. And over a period of five or six years, I think they were able to get that to zero. So we're certainly hoping that we've realized some growth across the areas and that we've got rid of some of these, particularly these repeat comments. And with that being said, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you. Thank you.
Is the green light on?
Yeah, make sure you have the green light on.
I think so.
Okay, maybe pull it up just a bit.
Ah, how about that?
There you go.
There we go. Sorry about that. It wasn't, I thought it looked lit, but it wasn't lit, so. Um, but as far as the financial statements, I know they've been distributed. The overall presentation or the look of the financial statements, if you were to compare those to last year, very consistent with what you saw last year. You know, and I kinda wanna just, as kind of general comments, is thank everybody, all the departments. A lot goes into putting this, you know, 200 and some page report out. And so we are greatly appreciative of all the departments and all the individuals. We do a lot of poking and prodding and digging into various different areas. And so that overall process is very time-consuming. Even though it was, it was our second year, still learning your processes and procedures, who has what, and that type of thing. So, I mean, obviously, it was, you know, a little bit easier this year, but we're still learning. So that's, that is, things did go very well this year. So like I said, thank you to all those departments. What I'll plan to do is, basically, I'll let you folks kind of direct me on where you'd like to go. I have some financial information that we can talk about. I know comments are very important, so we can talk about those two. And then, like I said, the outline, the presentation that I handed out has some graphs and so forth attached to it, so we can...
Yeah, I think start with a high-level kinda overview of the financial aspect, and then let's get into the comments.
Wonderful, okay. So in the financial statements, if you have, happen to have it, or if you don't, that's fine too. You don't really need it to hear what I have to say. So in the report, one of the first components of the report is our independent auditors' report. So even though we've, you know, typed and put the report together and bound everything, this is the only thing in the report that is Manor Custerian's. And this is the main objective of the audit process. It starts on page 13, if you did have, happen to have the report. But this is our opinion on your financial statements. So the main objective of the audit process, you know, is to issue this statement to be able to say that everything is in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, and this opinion here is what we call a clean or an unmodified opinion. So I always tell councils and commissions, that's the best possible opinion that you can get. It's saying that everything is in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So if you were looking at this, it's basically that the paragraph is on the top of page 14 gives that unmodified opinion. So that's what, as your audit was transmitted to Treasury, and it goes to your bonders and your grantors and all, and you as a council and so forth and management, that's what you want, is that good, clean, unmodified opinion. And that's what you have at the start of the financial statements for June 30th, 2021. Again, I'll just kinda touch on some totals and some things that are larger presentation-wise in the financial statements. Again, if you had them in front of you, pages 32 and 33, I'll just kinda touch on, again, some totals. This details out all of the city's assets and liabilities on what we call the full accrual basis of accounting. So it starts out with assets, flows through, all of assets comes to liabilities, and then resulting equity or net position flows over to page 33. But just a couple items that I'll point you to, again, if you don't have it in front of you, it's perfectly fine. Net pension liability and net other post-employment benefit liabilities. Those are always areas of interest, you know, for council members and so forth. Both of those, if you were, again, looking on page 33, your net pension liability at the end of June 30th, 2021 was approximately $294,000. And then the net, and I'll refer to it as OPEB, just 'cause it's a little easier to say, the net OPEB liability was about $219,000, or $219 million, excuse me, $219 million. So both of those liabilities, down substantially from 2020. So if you were to look at a 2020 audit, your net pension liability is down about $49 million from '20 to '21. And then the net OPEB liability is down about $345 million from '20 to '21. So substantial decreases in both of those liabilities. So as, and the majority of that is, you obviously have some, or you have actuarial studies done each year, and they made some modifications. The city made some modifications, and then they obviously flow those through the OPEB and the pension actuarial studies. So there were some changes in assumptions for pension, changes in assumptions, additional employer contributions, and investment income was up. So if you had, you know, you had changes in assumptions, which actually increased the liabilities, but some of those other things decreased the liabilities. So the net effect was that $49 million decrease to the net pension liability. So that's positive. You know, there was, and then also for the OPEB, the other post-employment benefit, like I said, that's down about $345 million. So again, changes in assumptions. So there was, you know, reductions of inflation rates, and there's a discount rate that they utilize as part of the calculation. Those assumption decreases, and then things were a little bit better than expected. So basically, over that actuarial study from 2020 to 2021, that was the driver for those decreases. So still large numbers, you know, still obviously very large numbers, but substantially decreased from '20 to '21. So those are positive things. And that's really all I wanted to point out there on that statement, because those are always, you know, usually, like I said, areas of interest to council members. And then, then to, again, if you've got the financial statements, page 38, I'm just gonna touch on real briefly on the general fund, fund balance numbers, and then we can talk about the, we can go into the letters. But looking at, on page 38, just to kinda touch on the fund balance for the general fund. Obviously, you have, you know, substantial number of funds. The general fund is the one that handles the majority of the general operations of the city. And so just to point you to one number here on this page is, like I said, page 38, the unassigned fund balance, a little over $21 million. So unassigned fund balance at June 30th, 2021, that $20,229,000. That's approximately 17% of your annual expenditures sitting in fund balance, so good, healthy fund balance. This year, there was a pretty significant increase to fund balance. I'll point you to that page. But usually, the rule of thumb, and that's, you know, one of the main questions that we see as auditors, is how much do we have in fund balance? And what do you recommend we have in fund balance? And so usually, the rule of thumb that we utilize in our firm and kind of across the profession is 15% to 20% of annual expenditures is a good rule of thumb in fund balance, and you're sitting as of June 30th, 2021 at 17%. So you're right, you know, you're right in that 15% to 20%, you know, and, but really, that's our rule of thumb. But it really depends on what you have planned for the future and what you as, you know, as council has planned. I know you have a kind of a revenue projection that you utilize, and that's roughly 15% of your current year revenues sitting in that number. So again, I think that's right within line with your fund balance policy for the city. And then just to touch on totals, if you have the audit, again, page 40, total, I'll just touch on total revenues again, looking at the general fund. Page 40 is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So kind of an income, you know, income statement. Total revenues for the year, $141 million. That's up about $7 million from last year to this year, so pretty consistent. You know, revenue sharing was up, and some other areas were up for 2021, about a $7 million increase. The biggest area is expenditures were down. As you see, total expenditures, $119,000, or $119 million, excuse me, in expenditures. Expenditures are down about $11 million from last year to this year. So from 2020 to 2021, expenditures were down about $11 million. So what that means is you had a revenues over expenditures, or you added to fund balance for the year ended June 30th, 2020, of that $19,651,000. So they said that addition went into fund balance, and there was some, there were some assignments of that fund balance amount and so forth. But, you know, a good, healthy fund balance as of June 30th, 2021. And to take those graphs that I hopefully hit everybody with, that kinda takes all the, all, a lot of those numbers and boils them down into a couple pictures. So if you were to take a look at those, the first one, again, just so you can kinda visualize things, the first one is a bar chart of revenues, expenditures, and then resulting fund balance for the city. Revenues being blue, expenditures being burgundy, and then resulting fund balance being yellow there. So as you can see, you know, four of the last five years, '17, '18, '20, and '21, you've had revenues over expenditures. So you've added to fund balance in those years. So that's, you know, that's a positive trend, very, very positive. Obviously, the trick will be to keep those as close as possible, you know, going forward into the future. And then the other graph that's attached is a pie chart, again, kinda showing you where your revenues and your expenditures come from, for the general fund. So revenues at the top, expenditures at the bottom. And very common and very consistent graph here for revenues, 31% of your revenues, property tax revenue, that was 30% last year, so very consistent. Income tax at that burgundy area at 26%. That was 28% last year. So again, revenue's very consistent from '20 to '21. And then expenditures at the bottom, the largest area there, 61% of your expenditures for public safety, so that's obviously police-fire. And that was 58% last year, so pretty consistent. The next largest area is that blue shaded area at 14%, titled general government. This is kinda the states, but that categorizations. But those are your courts and your clerk, finance, human resources, attorney, you know, all that, city attorney, everything, that kind of, the general operational costs of the city are included in that, in that blue shaded area. So that kinda gives you a little bit of, a little bit of background, kind of a high-level background of the revenues, expenditures, and where fund balance shook out for the general fund. We can touch on the, touch on the letters, and we can go into those as in-depth as you want. Just to also mention, part of the audit process is also auditing the federal compliance, and auditing your federal dollars, and then issuing what we call the single audit, or the audit under uniform guidance. That is usually, and historically, that's been done about March. That's just about done now. I think we have just a handful of things. So the expectation would be, in fact, we just sent a draft out, and so that should hopefully hit your inboxes and for finance and so forth. But I would envision getting that probably processed by the end of the month. So that should be three weeks or so ahead. So that's, you know, again, as we talk about progress, that's, I think, a positive thing, that we were able to even substantially more dollars in federal dollars this year, but were able to get that audit processed and get that federal compliance component of that, I would assume, done substantially sooner.
Okay, we can pause just for a second.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Spitzling.
Well, I mean, I have several questions, so do you wanna wait till he's done, or?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Only because...
No, that's, I don't have a problem with it.
I anticipate you'll probably answer some of the presentation. Thank you.
And then, so also, as we talked, you know, and I know last year, we talked a lot about the internal control letter. So obviously, like I said, as part of that process, we audit the numbers, and, but we also look at your processes and procedures, systems, and all of those various different procedures. And then as a result, we issue that internal control letter. And so was improvement this year? As you can see, and as was mentioned at the start, there were eight comments last year. And within those comments, and we can kinda touch on those too, is there were multiple components. So there maybe was, there was a particular comment related to pensions last year. And that had, I believe, and I could, I've got last year's back there, but I believe we had eight or nine components of issues within that finding. And then this year, that comment is still there. So the comment is still there, but there's, I think, three or four components. So, I mean, I look at that and say, the comment is still there, but there's less components to it. And so there was some improvement on that. It wasn't completely taken care of and completely resolved, but there was progress moving forward on that. So, like I said, that's kind of the, that's kind of the particulars on that. To go through those, I don't know what would be easiest, if it'd be easiest to open it up for questions, or if you'd prefer to have me kinda go through each point, and point by point, or whatever folks would prefer.
I would prefer, unless I see some head shaking, I would prefer point by point. Is that okay with you guys? Okay, let's do that.
Okay, all right, great. So the first comment there in that internal control letter was related to material journal entries. So as part of that process, what we do is, is we take, part of the audit process, we take a download of your system, and we start with that to get to this audit report that you see in front of you. And historically, pre, maybe 15 or 20 years ago, we would start with that, what we would call that beginning trial balance, that unadjusted trial balance, your unadjusted financial records. And we would come to this document, and we never really talked about what happened in between. And so as part of, kinda full disclosure and so forth, there was a requirement to discuss that process of the in-between. You know, in-between what we started with and what is presented to council or commissioners and that type of thing as part of that audit process. Excuse me. And so that is, that is what this first comment relates to. As part of that process, there were some material journal entries that we proposed as part of the audit process, and that your finance department then went ahead and posted. And working through that, they also had entries. Once we got our trial balance, they gave us proposed and provided entries to us. So that process, the, I don't know, Commissioner Spitz, I don't know.
Yeah, so what we're gonna do is this. If we can go point by point, then what we'll actually do is just open it up for questions after each point.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
So Councilwoman Spitzling, go ahead.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President. First, before we start, can you tell me what a material weakness is?
Yes, and actually, there is also a definition of it within the letter here.
Yeah, I can read the definition.
Okay.
I'm talking about for the folks who are maybe listening.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. So as part of the process and as part of our, what we would call our findings, there's kinda, there's two levels. Three, a third level also. But the top level of the most significant issue, as we see them, would be that material weakness. So as we're looking at processes and procedures and internal controls and all that type of thing, if we see a particular issue that is a significant, is a deficiency that warrants comment, and it's at the highest level of deficiency, that's a definition of a material weakness.
So isn't it true, in fact, that this 2021-001 material journal entry is a material weakness?
Yes, ma'am, yes. Yeah, the first, I believe...
I, okay. And then after that, this one has, you said that there's been some improvement in that this year, there's only eight comments? Is that eight new comments, or just eight comments in general? And does that mean that some comments have been consolidated?
No. And actually, so there were eight last year, there are seven this year. So actually, one was resolved, one of the comments was resolved in total. So there's one less comment this year than last year. So, you know, I think if, you know, you were to go to the end, 2021-7 is the last one this year. If you had last year's letter, there were eight comments.
So under the material journal entries, this has been flagged by the independent auditors for the past one, two, three, four, five years, and the same recommendations on how to address these audits. So I will ask the same question I asked last year. You know, I know that you're as an internal auditor, so I'll ask the administration or directed to the administration is, you know, we're having the same issues over our journal entries for the proper, you know, for financial statements within the city's accounting records, and we've had the same comments for the past five years. And so what steps are being taken that are different from last year to try to reconcile this so that it is not a material weakness next year?
I think that is a better, sorry, a question better asked of Mrs. Kirkland. Mrs. Kirkland, go ahead.
Thank you. I will tell you that after reading the report, didn't know it was five years, same comment. My background is auditing. I sat down with the staff and said, we are going to develop a plan to address these findings. I'm also meeting with the outside auditor to get his information and what we need to do to move forward. So we're definitely working very hard, starting now, to address each and every one of these findings, and also to tighten up any type of internal control weakness.
So hopefully, the different plan than what Mr. Brower told us they were doing last year? Because that's the same comment we got last year, is that we're putting together a plan to address these, so.
I, I understand.
And I think part of the issue last year is, you know, obviously, sitting in that chair was Robert Whittigan. And, you know, at the time, I remember Robert saying that he was going to work with the budget director, he was gonna work with the internal auditor, he was going to work with the CSO, he was gonna work with, he actually said a number of times, we're gonna keep council very close, we're going to report back to council often, and that never, that never occurred, obviously. And then, obviously, we had some transancy in the office. So we are happy to hear that, and we certainly, I think, hope that we're kept in the loop, you know, obviously, as the year progresses, and certainly hope to see some growth, some additional growth. I know we did see some growth, but some additional growth next year. Thank you.
And can I also just mention also, unfortunately, when these findings are brought to our attentions, we're halfway into the fiscal year, which then basically takes you about two years to correct things. So even though we will correct them, they could still be findings next year with a kinder, you know, sorta like a kinder tone that say, yes, they've corrected these, but we could likely see the same findings, only because we're halfway into the fiscal year. So you would, you know, they could be eliminated, depends on, you know, our external auditors, but we're definitely working to address them, and I would be happy to come back and give you an update.
So on the first comment, Councilwoman Wood, do you have a question?
Thank you, President Hussein. My question has to do with, I'm not sure whether the internal, whether the auditor or finance will be able to answer this. Because of this material weakness, is that the reason that the appropriate transfer of funds that were supposed to go to the retirement system did not get made?
I...
That could be, that was an error, from my understanding, and Jake could probably address that a little bit more.
Yes, I believe that might be...
Just so the council members know that don't sit on the retirement board, that during the audit process, we were told in the retirement system that $2,080 some dollars for the police and fire was not transferred into the retirement system. And in the ERS, about $480,000 was not transferred, and these are deductions that come from employees.
Yeah, so I don't believe that is related specifically to this entry, but that relates to a quarterly entry that we make. And I believe there was a misstep in the middle there, where a previous accounting operation hadn't been done before we made those contributions. So as we took the liability that was on the books in the general fund for that, that we had missed the step of taking the liability that existed in other funds and transferring that to the general fund, and that is where the discrepancy occurred. And so now that has, that has been corrected in our procedures and will not happen again.
And that was caught by the auditor, is that correct?
I don't know. I'm trying to, I'm trying to put my finger on when that happened. I don't, I guess I don't recall, but I mean, it might have been one of the, one of my, you know, staff members that pointed that out to...
I don't know who this calls.
Yeah, we could, we could look into the chain of events on how we came about that.
And again, because that money was not able to be invested, that was a loss to the retirement system.
Any other questions, any other comments on comment number one? All right, thank you. Oh, sorry, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, President Hussein. To Councilwoman Wood's point about the lost investment, what was the time period? Hello? Okay, sorry about that. To Councilwoman Wood's point, there was a lost investment. How long was this mistake? How long, how long did it take to get this rectified?
Once we identified the error, we made the correction with the following payment that was due to the system. And I don't believe that was a very long period of time.
About a year? Is that what we're...
No.
That's a long period of time.
So notably, there's two different factors that we're considering here. There's the annual required employer contribution, which is in the course of tens of millions of dollars that we're paying into the pension system. And then there's the employee contribution, which is withheld from paychecks and paid into the system on a quarterly basis. Now, previously, this was an operation that had occurred on an annual basis at the end of the year. But one of the improvements that we made was that we moved it to a quarterly schedule. So on a quarterly basis, we reconciled this account and paid that amount. So that's an improvement from previous years. However, because of the operation that I had mentioned, there was a small amount missing from those payments until we caught that and fixed it.
So Councilwoman Wood indicated it was $400,000? And so how long, so that was about a year? Is that what I was hearing?
One quarter.
One quarter, Mr. Brown.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, Steve. We'll move on to number two, thank you.
Great, yep. So... Great, yep. Um, so, number two, um, reconciling items on the bank reconciliation. So, obviously, as part of the, the process, the normal accounting process on a, on a monthly basis, um, preparation of bank reconciliations is, is extremely important. And so, as part of that, you know, we get in and, and, and we look at those bank reconciliations and, and audit those bank reconciliations. As part of that reconciliation process at the city, um, as it says there, there were, uh, many old outstanding reconciling items that had not been resolved on the, on the bank rec. So, those were, were sitting out there, old outstanding checks and, 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 uh, various different adjustments that had not been, um, adjusted for. Um, and then also the timing of those, kind of the best practice, as it says in the, in there, is, is, you know, usually, after the month end, thirty to forty-five days after that month end, um, is kind of the best practice to have the bank reconciliation done. Any adjustments to that posted, excuse me, um, to your system? And, and so that way, they don't sit out there and they're, you know, stale, so to speak, you know, and, and older items. Um, and then, but, so, we did see improvement to the, to that process, um, as far as getting the bank reconciliations, um, done a little more timely. And it kind of goes back to Ms. Kirkland's, um, point, is that some of those items, um, earlier in the year, they were further behind. And, and as they got closer to that June thirty time period, they were getting closer to being caught up. But, obviously, we look at the whole year, so that is, is part of that comment, is continue to work to improve the timeliness of the bank reconciliation.
And, and I appreciate that. I know that, um, in our notes here, uh, some of that is tied to, uh, staff re, you know, shortages and reductions. Um, did, Ms. Mrs. Kirkland, can you speak a little bit about that and, and talk about where we're at right now and, and the path forward in terms of making sure that we're fully staffed?
So, we are still working to be timely on our bank reconciliations. We do have two part-time or contractual individuals here with us who are working on, uh, one's working on bank recs. We're looking to hire an accountant that would help us also, would be timely with that and some other areas too. So, we are still short staffed, so we are, but we're working to improve on all of those things.
Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is this a material weakness?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, how old? Because you're saying, what you said was that you've found improvement. However, when I'm looking at the report and I'm looking at my, my old reports, the comments are the same. So, the report isn't reflecting that you, that you, that this improvement that you're telling me, you, it's still thirty to forty-five days after month's end. So, I, if you could tell me what the improvement is, that would be helpful. That's the first thing. How old are some of these, um, old, you said there were some of these old, um, entries that have not been resolved? How old are they, if you know? And then, uh, you know, I, I understand that there's a staffing issue, but I understand from the past one, two, three, four, five years that there's been a staffing issue. Um, so, now we have contract workers. So, when you're finished with yours, I'd like to know how long you've had the contract workers and what is your specific timeline that you think, that you want to do to hire, um, permanent workers to do this so that I can write it down so that next year, I'll know if you've exactly, if you've in fact hired them. So, if you could answer my first, how old are some of the entries? And could you explain to me what are some of the improvements? Because I'm seeing the same verbiage this year that I saw last year, that I saw the year before, that I saw the year before.
Right, yep.
I mean, it's the exact verbiage.
Yep, yep. And, and so, a couple of the, what I would call improvements is that time period got closer to forty-five days? You know, they're still, it was still out there and, and old, but there was, it wasn't seventy, ninety, you know, I mean, it was, it was up until, um, December-ish by the time the, the June recs were finished in 2020. This year, it was about October, November. So, there was a, there was a shortening of the time period to get them completed. Still past the forty-five days, kind of that rule of thumb of forty-five days best practice. Um, but the improvement was that they were, it wasn't, you know, one hundred and twenty days out there. So, so that, I, I, we saw that improvement. Also, in 2020, um, they did have outside assistance, um, help with those. I think in 2021, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in 2021, the city internal staff did them themselves. Um, so, we felt that, you know, they're, they're taking on more of that process, they're not farming out, you know, as much of that. So, so that, we felt was, like, maybe they're, you know, getting it all on their plate, so to speak, and, and being able to, to handle it, the, you know, handle it within, internally within the city. So, those are kind of a couple of the things that we saw that we, that we marked as improvement. Still, you know, not meeting that best practice of, you know, thirty to forty-five days and so forth. Um, so hopefully, that answers the.
And so, yeah, and so, Mrs. Kirkland, to the second set of questions, please, thank you.
So, one of the plans is we have seventy-plus bank accounts. And the plan is to consolidate the best we can down those bank accounts. The second thing that we're doing immediately is dividing up those, all of those accounts to the staff. So, everyone will be responsible so to reconcile timely the bank accounts. We do have one part-time or contractual person who came in right during the audit to help us get caught up on our bank recs. And, uh, I believe she's here until the end of March or so, uh, to keep us current on those. Uh, we will be posting an accounting position, hopefully, before the end of this month. And, and then we will still look to try to get another accountant in before the, or at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, the plan is to divide up the work, to make sure everyone is aware, and then to come back and be accountable to each other that these things are done on a timely basis.
Councilwoman Spitzley, does that answer your question?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, that's, that's what we heard last year, too. So, I'm hoping that, again, as we move forward, that, that we can get some of this stuff and, and take them off the roll. So, yeah, I'm, and it answers my question.
All right, Vice President Wood.
Um, Ms. Kirkland, this has nothing to do with you, so I, I, I wanna preface that before I start. But I will tell you that I'm sick and tired of hearing about the fact that there's not enough staff. This has gone on for five years. That has been the excuse that we've heard since Angie Bennett was here. And we continue to hear that. And if there's a problem in the hiring process, then maybe we need to have HR in here. Um, you know, I, 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 I'm sorry, but, um, you can't get your work done and we can't feel confident about it if we don't, if you don't have the staff. So, um, Mark, as I'm looking at, at you, um, I would like to know how long these positions have been open, how many times you've posted for them? Is there an issue with the, um, level that you're paying them at, that you're not getting applicants? And I'd like that, those answers back to this body as soon as possible.
Yeah, and, and to that point, um, just so that you know, I've had a few conversations with, um, Linda, as a matter of fact. And she would like to actually come in as part of our committee of the whole process, um, and talk about the HR, um, department, their processes, uh, some of the challenges that they're facing, um, their path forward. And so, as part of our leadership meeting tomorrow, we're gonna actually take a look at, um, our committee of the whole agenda over the next couple of months and see when we can actually get them in here. Um, sorry, what's that? Uh, no, no, we, I, I told her I'd circle back with her once, once I talked, uh, in leadership. Thank you. Uh, so, do, do we have any other questions with regards to comment two? Saying none, go ahead.
So, the third point, um, is 2021 dash three relates to pension and, and OPEB. Um, and this is, this is one of the ones that, um, again, if you were to look at this comment last year, um, it had nine, what I would call, components to it. Um, and, uh, and so those issues that were in there, um, you know, were kind of, you know, laid out within the, within the condition and so forth. In, in 2021, um, there are four items that are, that are detailed in here that I'll point you to. Um, so there, again, there was, there was some improvement there. Um, the first one relates to the actuarial reports. So, part of the process is, um, the city transmits information to the actuary. And the actuary, um, does their thing and, and processes the, the reports and so forth, and then produces reports back to, um, to the city, I think to the board, the pension boards and, and so forth for, um, review. And, and then they're provided to us as part of the audit process. And then, and then we, we do our audit steps and, and so forth. Um, part of that process is, is, uh, providing that information to the actuary and getting it back, obviously. Um, that process, um, usually produced reports back to us to audit, um, as it says there, in early December. Well, that's a pretty short time for, you know, period for us to be able to then take the audit and conduct our audit procedures on those and be able to hit the deadline of getting the report sent to, to Treasury, get it to, uh, you know, to, to counsel and, and all that type of thing, um, to meet those deadlines. So, so that process of, of producing the reports, or producing the information to the actuary and then actuary getting it back to the city, um, we're recommending, obviously, that needs to be pushed up, you know? And, and, and I think, again, I think that's been something that's, you know, been indicated in, in the past. And, and, but really, a lot of that information is, is information within the system. It's, it's the core people, but it's also the retirees and it's the new people and it's, you know, that kind of information, so.
All right, first, Vice President Wood, and then Councilwoman Spitzley.
Okay, to, to a couple issues with, with this particular, uh, finding. One, the board has adopted, the retirement boards have adopted a policy that the information from finance is supposed to be to the actuary by June. And Jake, you know, we've had this discussion before, it doesn't get to them in time. So, the actuarial cannot be done by, by our employee, the, the retiree board's employee, because we haven't gotten that information in a, in a timely manner. So, the board has done everything that they can to try to make sure that that's happening. Another comment that you, uh, have in here has to do with the fact that you believe that, uh, we might be in, uh, violation of PA, uh, two zero two of 2017. I reached out to the attorney for the, uh, retirement boards, and he believes that you might be mistaken, um, with that. That this is a, um, eight years that one of two things are to occur. Either a peer actuary audit of the retirement system is conducted by someone other than the board's actuary, or two, that the board's actuary is replaced. PA two oh two went into effect on December 2017, which would mean that the boards would be in, would not be out of compliance until, um, 2025. So, we are not out of compliance at this point. And in, um, December of 2017, we actually did a, um, compliance, uh, with our actuary and did a, um, uh, um, RFP, um, on them. So, I just, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, that's good to know, because we, I was not aware of that, so that, I appreciate that, appreciate that information.
So, if we can make sure that we get that corrected.
Yes, ma'am.
Into the record, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't ask you again. This is a material weakness.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
So, in the past, um, one of the comments last year, and I think it's, from hearing your comment, I, I think it's still the case is, is that one of the issues with this pension and OPEB activity is that the city did not have a handle of who actually was retired or going in the system and coming out of the system. Has that been addressed?
There were some, and, and all, the testing, because we don't, we don't look at everybody, but the testing that we did, we didn't have any non-compliance with John Doe was in the system and shouldn't be, or, or, or vice versa, and that type of thing. We didn't have any of that in our testing that, that we did. That is correct.
So, Mr. Brower, have you guys, um, determined, and have you, have you addressed that where, you know, there were some retirees that weren't counted, there were some that, so have you, do you have an accurate count at this point? Because last year, the year before, the year before, that was a, that was a main issue that you didn't, that the city did not have an accurate counting of employees, the retired employees that were in and out of the system. If you recall, that was a bone of contention, not only with me, but I'm sure with other council members, is when you, when it was arbitrarily decided to change retirement and change their, their benefits, how can you do that when you don't have an accurate, you don't even know accurately how many folks are in the system? And so, has that been addressed?
Over the past year, we've made numerous, uh, improvements to this. Uh, we have taken, we have listened to the retirement boards and responded and gotten communication with Greg Stump to provide information on an earlier basis. Uh, one of the areas that, uh, we did not succeed is we did not get it on, uh, precisely the timeline that, uh, was set by the retirement boards. Uh, however, we, uh, did get it at a much sooner basis. And so, uh, we've improved our communication with, uh, our actuary in order to provide them information, uh, the information that they need in the form that they require it. And we are looking at the data in order to make sure that, uh, these errors and, uh, misplacements are corrected and taken care of.
But, Mr. Brower, that's not an actuarial issue, that's an HR issue and a City of Lansing issue for you to know how many of our folks, retired folks are in the system and going in the system. So, I, I understand that you talk about the, the actuarial requirements, but I'm talking about having an accurate number, an accurate representation of how many retirees are in the system. That was, that was an issue with the audits for the past five or six years. So, I'm asking you, have you addressed that?
I would say that we have. We have undergone the mortality study by the retirement board, so there's actions that we have taken to vastly improve that. Can I say that it's perfect? Not necessarily. Uh, however, it's much better than it was in previous years. And we'll continue to make sure that's.
Councilwoman, I will, I will talk to HR tomorrow, and I will find out if we can find, get an answer for you if this has been done. You're welcome.
Very much appreciated. Other questions? All right, please note, it is about six forty-eight. I certainly do not want to, uh, cut this conversation short. Uh, but if there's a way, we still have four points we have to get through, so if there's a way to be productive, thorough, and efficient, that would be incredible. All right, thank you.
Yes, and, and I can combine, how about four and five, we can kind of combine together. It's, it's reconciliation of, of, and four talks about certain revenue accounts, and point oh oh five talks about material liability accounts. Um, so, as part of the process is, is reconciling material accounts, and, and whether they're revenues, assets, liabilities, you know, like we talked about, bank reconciliations, or, or payroll liability accounts, or revenue, um, accounts. And that's what point four and five are talking about there, is, is reconciling those revenues to the revenue point. Um, is the revenues that come from the Board of Water and Light as they process some of your utility revenues and so forth. Um, no specific reconciliation process was being done to assure that, that all collections and so forth were appropriately remitted to the city. We're obviously recommending, um, that that process be reviewed and, and analyzed to make sure that there is, there is, um, reconciliation process of, of those, of those, um, revenues. Also, liability accounts. Um, and, and this very well may, um, uh, go to the point that you've talked about, um, before, is, is those material payroll liability accounts and assuring that, and basically, those are dollars in, dollars out. You, you collect dollars, you withhold dollars from, from, as, for instance, you know, employees and that type of thing, and then they get remitted to their appropriate spots. Um, and so, that's what we're recommending there on, on point number five. I don't know if there's any specific questions on four and five? And these are, and, and maybe this is one of your questions, but these are actually significant deficiencies?
That wasn't my question.
Okay, all right, so, um, but that's what, you know, these are, are kind of that second level of, of findings when we talk about material weaknesses, significant deficiencies or other items. These are that, that center finding, um, as far as, as far as significant deficiencies, but go ahead.
So, these two, four and five, I think it's four, five, five or six, um, these are new?
They were there last year. They may be numbered differently, and I can grab my, I can grab my report from last year, but they, they were in there from last year.
Okay.
Um, so, those are repeats. I know that, uh, because we didn't have any new issues, um, that, that were presented this year. So, four and five are, are repeat issues from, from the prior year. I don't know if they got renumbered. I could, do you want me to?
They were, they were renumbered.
So, I'll say they're repeat issues, but just like for the past couple of years, so let's.
I believe we, as we did the audit for the first time last year, I believe that was the first time that they were in the audit, correct?
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Are there other questions? All right, to point number six, payroll process.
Yes. So point number six, again, a, a repeat, significant deficiency. As part of our process, we test the payroll process and, and see, you know, John Doe works, John Doe, you know, gets paid and so forth and goes through, goes through the system. And, and as we did that, we didn't have any problems with, with anybody's pay or, or hours paid and, and that type of thing. But as it says there in the, in the condition, much of that data entry is manual. And so obviously, what do you have with manual processes is the potential for error. And so, you know, as we say there is, is that, you know, things are, that they're manually processed and, and submitted and paid and without a real management review and approval of that prior to the, the dissemination of those dollars. So even though we did not see any, you know, issues with the specific ones that we tested, we felt that that's a systemic issue that needs to be looked at to, to try to put, you know, as you, as you look at controls, you look at preventative controls, you look at detective controls and, and, and obviously the most important ones are preventative. So if you can prevent something from going wrong, that's what we're recommending with, with point number six.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. Mr. Brewer, isn't that one of the areas you did some testing in as well?
Yes, and like I said, is, yeah, is I've worked with HR to go through some of the, the issues. But like I said, is, I think the comment that it made is the external party review or a management review of the time cards, input entry. But like I said, it's a very labor-intensive process and there's a lot of inefficiencies from the software. And I can't comment on things, but for my professional opinion, with the staff, the staff is, I've seen that improvement. I've worked with them, you know, Carol, I've had a lot of discussions with them. And I see there's improvement since new management or has taken over finance, but there's still a lot of inefficiencies with bad data from the previous management or finance. And then also the inefficiencies of the computer or the financial system, which I think, you know, in the future, they are looking at avenues to possibly rectify some of that issues with inefficiencies, either by upgrading the current financial system or looking at possibly going to another financial system that has more available staff that can hire within the pool of Lansing, because currently the system that they're using is based, was based out of California and then it was acquired by a Florida company. And it's, from my research, like I said, very limited research, it is not used by a lot of municipal clients in the state of Michigan. So there's not a robust hiring pool. So a lot of these issues, what I would say, a lot of these issues that are occurring is because of that sole thing, because essentially when you get a new person in, you have to retrain them. And sorry about seeing you being so long.
No, that's all right. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, all right, on to point seven.
Okay, and, and the final point is, is unfavorable budget variances. Again, if you had the, if you have the audit report, the full annual comprehensive financial review or report, page 139 has the details of the budget variances and so forth. And as, as part of this process, if there's a budget variance, we're required to report that. And so that's what, that's what, what this finding is, is that obviously the, the most important thing is to be able to monitor that, those expenditures and, and adjust the budget accordingly as, as you see fit and as needed.
All right, do we have questions on point seven or general questions or comments? Vice President Wood.
I just have a couple of general questions. One, and, and I send this to, to Jake. I know that when we were going through the budget process last year and talking about our general fund reserve or our rainy day fund or whatever we want to call, you know, whatever name we want to put on it, there was no anticipation that we would end up with the amount of money that we now have in there. And I'm trying to figure out from your expectation, what we were given during a budget process and where we are today, what do you think happened to increase the general fund reserve?
Yes, so at the beginning of FY '21, the city was at a $10.1 million fund balance of combined budget stabilization fund and general fund reserves. Through that, over the course of that fiscal year, we received some federal assistance in the form of public safety, public health, payroll reimbursement grants and coronavirus relief for local government grants. That was $7.3 million in our favor. We also rectified some errors that we had with the IRS and some payment filings that gave us $2.5 million bonus, a combined $9.8 million between those two items. However, those were things that we expected. And with, on top of that, we had projected about a $5.8 million gap between expenditures and revenues, which combined with that $9.8 million in one-time revenues would have given us an ending fund balance of $14.1 million, which was an improvement in the direction that we wanted to go, but reliant on one-time sources. However, one of the areas in particular that we had expressed the most uncertainty towards and many communities around Michigan had expressed such uncertainty was to the collection of our income taxes. And in particular, we are a community where we are heavily reliant on the state government as a major employer and other employers who really have the capacity for remote work. One of the areas that we were looking at and concerned through the course of the fiscal year that we could not determine until the final accruals have been made was to be the final impact of refunds over the course of the fiscal year. So in response to this uncertainty and this unprecedented situation, we chose the route of a super conservative approach. And so at the beginning of the fiscal year, we had took our original estimate and proposed three scenarios of a moderate impact, intermediate impact and a severe impact. And so that was a 25, 20, 25 and 30% reduction in general fund and the income tax revenue. Overall, we ended up going with the middle route of a moderate impact, which we projected as. So the minimal impact was that the executive order for shutdowns would not extend beyond June 1st. As that did increase, we looked at the mini, middle impact where organizations were cautious and operating at 50% or lower capacity. There were other factors that we were considering. Overall, at the end of the year, we were pleased to find out that the worst-case scenario that we had feared had not come to pass. And in fact, that we only experienced a mild decline in revenues relative to the previous fiscal year, although greater in terms of what we would have realized without COVID-19. So that was about a $7.6 million in the positive direction. Overall, another area where we experienced positive news was in the form of state revenues and charges for services. Each of those amounted to a total, combined total of $2.7 million in our favor. Beyond those two items and revenues, what really helped the city was the responsibility of our department directors. And so department by department, we see positive variances in which directors heard all the news that we're telling them, they understood the consequences and the financial position that the city were, was in, and they managed their funds well. We also took advantage of programs from the state in terms of work share, where we're able to provide employees, effectively furlough employees for a day. However, they would receive the expanded unemployment benefits, which recovered any lost income that they would have received. And we did that for the two times it was available. So between that, we got $1.7 million within parks, $1.5 million savings in public safety, $2.1 million in other revenues and expenditures, which brings us to our ending fund balance of $29.7 million.
Thank you. Just, you know, for folks that are just arriving, as well as those folks that are tuning in remotely, we are still in committee of the whole. I think we are incredibly close to, to putting a bow on this thing. And then what we'll do is take a five-minute break and then we'll begin our regular city council meeting. Councilwoman Spitzler.
My only other question was, when you were giving those by departments, that wasn't a vacancy factor, that was on top of savings, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. How much, how many, how much ARPA dollars contributed to the fund balance?
Zero dollars so far. Now, for, we received the ARPA dollars in August of 2021, which makes it the 2021, 2022 fiscal year, which is the current year that we're in. We will receive the second tranche of dollars in the subsequent fiscal year, which will be as part of our upcoming budget season. And so so far, as part of our adopted budget, we had originally anticipated a gap between expenditures and revenues of about $18 million in the general fund, about $5 million in the parking fund, overall exhausting the first tranche of reserves. As we take a look at our audit, we are revising our budget expectations in terms of the actual results that we've seen over the fiscal year. The uncertainty that we had felt is now becoming more certain. And so we will provide with you a budget amendment in line with our expectations for the remainder of the fiscal year to account for that.
So because when you said one time, one time, when you said one time federal dollars, I, I thought that, I thought that was like through the American Rescue, but that, that wasn't.
Yeah, that was through the first round of stimulus bills, the CARES Act. And so we received $7.3 million from two sources that flowed through to the state of Michigan and came out in terms of grants that we're able to pay for public safety expenditures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief. Now, you mentioned the, the COVID relief dollars that were going to public safety. I heard that there was supposed to be dollars going to public service, the essential workers as well, and is that not happening anymore?
That is in discussions with our bargaining units and between the administration. There was a grant that we received from the state for $380,000 for first responders that we issued out to all eligible employees. And we're reviewing the ARPA final guidance and in discussion with our labor unions for next steps. So no action has been taken, but that does not necessarily mean no action will be taken.
I got a, I got a couple of hands up. Thanks.
I just want to follow up on his really.
Nope, yep, and we got a couple of hands up. Couple, let me, let me, before I forget as well, the charter does require, it's been brought to my attention, the charter requires that the audit be made public through the city clerk's office. And for whatever reason, whether it be the auditor's responsibility or the finance department's responsibility, that has not actually been made available at the clerk's office, so we, we need to fix that.
We'll correct that immediately.
We're going to go Councilman Wood and then Councilwoman Spitzler.
And, and just for clarification, you've only given out the one payment to public safety. You have not given out any other payments.
That is correct.
To public service or public safety.
That's correct.
So it's now a negotiating tool.
Councilwoman Spitzler.
Thank you, Mr. President. So that's my concern is that these dollars aren't supposed to be used as a tool of negotiation or to supplement their existing salary as part of the negotiation. These funds are supposed to be, you know, for them as first responders on the front lines, you know, basically no strings attached. And so it is disturbing if it is in fact true that these funds have been withheld because you're going through different bargaining units. That's my first, that's my first comment, because that's, that's what I heard him say, is you're talking to various, you know, bargaining units and that money should be there. My other thing is, I'm under, so does it just go to police or, or fire? Because I'm hearing discrepancies of one agency is, is getting regular COVID dollars right now and another agency isn't getting any at all. And so I'm trying to figure out, you know, are, are we in fact helping out our first responders who are out there without having it subject to any type of bargaining?
The funds.
Collective bargaining.
The funds in question are the state and local fiscal recovery funds, which are part of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. And these funds, we received a sum, well, we will ultimately receive a sum in excess of $49 million. These can be used for four different purposes. It can be used towards responding to the negative economic or public health impacts of COVID-19, to provide premium pay to eligible workers and to provide necessary infrastructure in water, sewer or broadband. And lastly, to pay for government services to the extent of revenue loss. And the, in the initial adopted budget by a city council, we had used effectively the entirety of that first tranche to pay for government services to the extent of revenue loss in order to maintain government services without significant cuts and harm to the community. Now, one of the eligible uses, among the eligible uses, is to provide premium pay to eligible workers, being essential workers. And some of the main components of that are, it has to be work that is done in person, either with frequent contact with other people or handling of objects that have been handled by other people. There's a series of considerations that we need to make in terms of impact by the pandemic and risk. And so we're reviewing those conditions to make sure that any premium pay that we do issue is done in, in cooperation with federal guidance.
Well, I'm going to be looking during the budget. I'm just going to tell you right now, I'm going to be looking at the budget and I'm going to be looking to see whether or not our police and fire are getting this, these dollars and not having it just solely being used to plug up some budget hole. And they, when they are, they have been out there for the past two and a half years face to face and they're not, you know, there are other communities across the board that have, that have decided that their, you know, public, their, their frontline workers are worth getting an increase in pay. And apparently, the City of Lansing is not one of those communities. And so I am going to be looking, it's very personal to me, full disclosure, but I'm going to be looking to make sure that our frontline workers are being supported like other, other communities. Thank you.
And we certainly appreciate that. Councilman Garza.
Okay, last question. Thank you. So I see there was a substantial investment at the parking ramp on Chiwasi and Capitol. And on top of that, I think it was close to $700,000 on a lighting structure. Was any of those one-time funds used for that project?
No.
Thank you. Council Vice President Wood.
But you did use money to shore up the parking fund.
We appropriated those dollars for the current fiscal year, but pending final review of the final rule and a budget amendment.
So there is the anticipation of using the ARC dollars to shore up the parking fund?
Yes, you're correct.
Thank you.
Are there, are there other questions, other comments? Seeing none, Mr. Kurnovich, we certainly appreciate you and your team at Manor Coster Son, I think I said Costerian earlier.
Yeah.
Appreciate you. Mr. Brower, as well as Mrs. Kirkland, we appreciate you all being here. And we certainly hope that as we work to, you know, fine tune the process and get rid of some of these, these comments, that we're able to work in conjunction with one another, that the, the work is transparent. Thanks so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That being said, is there any other business before the body? Seeing none, very quickly before we adjourn, we're going to take a five-minute break and we'll try to start right around seven, in terms of our regular city council meeting, right around 7:15. So with that being said, we stand adjourned at 7:09.